Good to go.
Okay, thanks Nick, welcome everyone. My name is Mark Kiefer. I am the chairman of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission and I'm calling to order the commission's public hearing at 5:03 PM on July 17th, 2025. This is the July 2025 hearing with Beacon Hill Architectural Commission and I am joined by Commission Vice Chair Aaron Allen as well as Commissioners Finegold and we have Commissioner Steele yet? Not yet, but Commissioner Steele is not yet present. We'll make the record clear if when she joins. Today, the commission will be holding a public hearing to review applications in accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, including the several subsequent amendments. We're conducting the meeting. That is to say amendments extending the suspension of these provisions. We're conducting the meeting online, which is a Zoom to ensure public access to deliberation of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission. The public may access this call through telephone or video conferencing, again aka Zoom. As you may have heard, but in case you didn't, the hearing is being recorded. So all further conversations between commissioners should be audible to the public in attendance until the hearing is adjourned. At this point, we'd like to acknowledge any media or elected officials who may be present. Are there any? I see Dan Murphy from the Beacon Hill Times. Welcome Dan, thanks for joining. Any other media or elected officials present? If so, please try to make yourself known to Nick by raising your hand in the Zoom. Okay, and again, we'll acknowledge you if any further members join. Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions, provide public comment and applications and discussions. We'll give you a heads up when it's time to do that. We'll take them during each application. We'll have a time set aside for public comment. We'll let you know when we're going to do that. And then when the time comes, if you do want to be heard on the record, you'll need to raise your hand in the Zoom application, not physically like this, but down. There's probably a button on the bottom of your Zoom panel. Nick has some handy instructions on the screen right now that show you how to do that if you're not familiar with it. And again, we'll give you a heads up when it's time during each application to provide any public comment. And with that, we're ready to begin the agenda. First item on the agenda is we have ratification of public hearing minutes, but Nick, I understand we're going to delay that till next month.
Yes, correct.
Those minutes aren't ready yet, so we'll defer that. Do we need to take a vote on that or anything?
No, no, we'll just have those next month. Yeah.
Okay, we'll do that next month. So we have one violation to review. The violation is 51 Charles, I believe. Is there a representative or representatives from 51 Charles Street present? If so, please make yourself known to Nick. Raise your hand in the Zoom. Or even just wave your hand in front of the camera. And who are we looking for again?
Let's see. It should be Gary.
Yeah, don't see Gary. Okay, anyone else? 51 Charles. All right, why don't we table that for the moment if Gary appears or some other representative? We will come back to that one. Nick, do we need to do anything? No, because it's still pending the violation, right?
Correct, yeah. So he's not currently present, so nothing. We'll just send him a failure to appear if he doesn't show up.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so onto design review. First item on the design review agenda is 27 Brimmer. Is there a representative from 27 Brimmer?
See Colin right there.
Colin, hi Colin. Just need to unmute you. There we go. Hi Colin, welcome. Thanks for coming in. Do you want to just give us a brief summary of what you are proposing?
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Looks like Nicholas is going to share the first item on the agenda, which is our proposal for two wall sconces at the front entrance. The main front entrance to 27 Brimmer. There is a secondary basement entrance. But this, we propose this to flank the two doors. The paradiors. And there's a follow-up. Oh, here's a cut sheet, finished black. And then, is it okay if I share my screen?
Please Colin, I'm having some issues with my mouse, so by all means, I'll give you co-host abilities.
Thank you.
And Mark, just for the record, Sandy arrived.
Oh yes, let the record reflect Commissioner Steele has joined the hearing. Thanks Nick.
Okay, can you see my screen?
You can too.
Okay, great. So this is the main entrance, archtop paradiors, and our proposal is for these two wall sconces here, Sullivan Island cut sheet. Which is here, but in a black finish.
Okay. And just for reference, I know we can see it in the drawing there, but how tall are these things?
Twenty and a half inches.
Okay. And there's two lamps in each scotch or each lantern.
Correct.
Right, okay. Like that, right. And if memory serves, there was something there already at some point, right? On the left-hand side, looking at the door?
There.
Do you have an existing photograph just to give us a little more context here?
Yes. So there's a plate here, yep. And we're proposing one here as well, blanking.
Okay. And again, the black finish. Correct, okay. Okay, please continue.
Okay, thank you. And then, two other items. One is a series of planter boxes on the rear facade, which is this elevation here. And we, this is our filing from last month. We appeared before you last month, but these weren't on the agenda, so they were not covered. We've since learned that there's a desire not to have brackets. We met with the neighborhood committee this past Monday. And so we've revised our detail from a an attached bracket detail to one that is more typical in the neighborhood. And so again, just the previous detail was here below the stone lug sill, planter box with a bracket. And we are proposing the new detail to be, and I apologize Nicholas, I just sent this to you a few hours ago. But you should have it in your email. And then, this is a temporary installation where we would rest it on the lug sill with some wood support blocks and then anchored with some eyelets into the window jam. So that's, this is my understanding from the meeting the other night in terms of what the preferred detail is and would
Yeah, thank you for making that change. We have a guideline D13 that basically just says window boxes shall not be permanently affixed to the building. So you would be right to observe that there are many window boxes around Beacon Hill in the historic district, but generally they are of this variety rather than what you would originally propose. They are just temporarily hung on there. So appreciate making that change. Just for clarification, do you have, this is on the, this is the second floor sill at this point, is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so you can see this from Mugar Way or Storo Drive, whatever it is at that point, Storo Drive, I guess.
That's correct, because the lower level's not visible because of the site walls, but these would be visible.
Okay, so again, just while we're here, those brackets go away and instead of a permanent installation, all three would be just hung with that simple eyelet fixture, as you just described. Yep. And they're going to sit up in the, in the window.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Okay, and not to get ahead of ourselves, but you'll have a revised drawing for us that reflects that at some point.
So I have sent that to you. I was
You did, oh, you did. You said that, I'm sorry, thank you.
Yep, so hopefully you can vote on it, that
Yeah.
It's And then, thirdly, the last item has to do with the rear terrace. Actually, let me, let me orient you. This is a view from Storo. Our fence is this weathered wooden fence. All the fences from the right here, all the way down to Mount Vernon are brick walls. And then, from here going to the left for, I don't know, several properties, they're, they're wood. And we would like to propose a similar brick wall with a black panel door. And so that's a little bit of context there. The inside, just to point one thing out, is that this wooden fence wall is the same height as the brick wall here, but not the same height as the fences from here going, you know, off towards 93 in that, in that direction. But we propose to just keep the height that it currently is, but make this a brick wall. And we're a little concerned about tree roots, so we're, you know, working through, you know, some helical pile and grade beam details on the technical side of things. So we originally proposed a brick tile wall out of concern of weight and so forth. But again, the proposal will be for you tonight, the details we just shared with Nicholas a few hours ago, based on comments we received the other night, is to just do a standard brick wall. And so the detail we have for that to share with you is this one here. So basically a grade beam on a helical pile. Full bed brick here. Block back up. Anchor door grade beam, brick on the inside with a stone coping cap with, with that six-panel door in the middle. So this is the elevation both sides.
Okay, just for the benefit of our commissioners, that lattice work that you saw, both in the section there and then in the other view, that, none of that's visible, right? Because that's inside of the back courtyard. Storo Drive is to the left here and the back of the house is to the right?
Correct.
Right, okay. So it's really just the wall that you're pointing to right now that's questioned. And really, it's just the outside of that wall that we can see. Okay, and then likewise on the next image, which was facing the house, just again, for clarity's sake. This one, yeah, yeah. So that's from the inside. Sorry, that's from the outside, but the other image that we saw a moment ago, no, that, that is from the inside, right?
It's the same both sides.
Yeah, yeah, but that lattice that you see, that's just in the upper left now, is, is not visible from the street.
Correct, it's no higher than, than the walls that are along Storo.
Right, okay. Thank you. Oh, is there a door in the fence now?
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a gate here. Right, it's clad with the weathered wood on the outside. I think somebody put plywood on the back of it, maybe to secure it.
Right, okay.
And, and those are the three items we have before you tonight.
Okay. Commissioners, before we take public comment, any questions, clarifying questions just at this point on the three items, the light fixtures on the front, the now revised temporary or temporary installation of window boxes, and thirdly, this rebuilding of the garden fence into a brick wall.
Mark, I'll just say, I just wanted to thank Colin for making these changes on a short turnaround time. I kind of gave him a couple of days notices, but I appreciate the quick turnaround time, Colin.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much. That's, that's very helpful. Okay, in that case, why?
I have comments, but not questions.
Okay, why don't we, if you don't mind Mo, just wait a moment to gather the benefit of public comment and then you can go first after that. Thank you. So again, if you want to be heard on the record, now's the time for public comment. Please raise your hand in the Zoom using the button, probably at the bottom of your Zoom panel. Nick will call and even turn and unmute you.
Yeah, Nick, Nicholas, do I have to make you host again? Because I'm I'm seeing some raised hands here. And I shouldn't be
I can, I'll take care of it, Colin. Thank you. Colin, if you don't mind just keeping the presentation back on the screen, I can take care of the hands race. Thank you. Yeah, appreciate it. So first up, we have, I thought I saw, where'd he go? Holland, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Holland Ward Beacon Hill Civic Association. I'm going to read this whole public comment, even though much, much of it's already been addressed and the changes since our meeting a few days ago. We do not oppose the new light fixtures as they are in traditional locations and are of appropriate size and style and satisfy guideline E6. Again, this is, the next part is not germane any longer. We oppose the proposed window box installations as they do not satisfy guideline D13, which does not allow window boxes to be permanently affixed to the building. We oppose the replacement of the wooden fence with the proposed thin-cut brick veneers. It does not satisfy guideline A3. Historic photographs show that the original pences along the rear of Brimmer Street houses were wooden and thin veneers as a substitute for traditional full brick is not an appropriate detail with regard to size, shape, material, and design and material for new work. Thank you.
Okay, not seeing any other public comment, Mark, so back to you.
Okay, thanks Holland, and appreciate you all raising these issues. It sounds like in advance at your meeting, it sounds like you had a productive discussion, so that was quite helpful. Okay, so public comment is now closed. Commissioner Finegold, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. On the first item, the light fixture. I wish it could be more of a contemporary fixture, but I understand what we're doing. And I think of the various choices I've seen, I really like this one. I like the double, the double light in each one. So I have no problem with the light fixture. Except it should be something else, but it isn't. It's okay, I like it. Second, the second comment, I don't think the window box should sit, should rest on the window sill. It should, it's shown a very precarious situation of resting at one point. I, I think it's either should hang from the eyelets, but not rest, but that's just a technical matter. Because I think it'll cause a lot of staining as water runs, tries to run underneath it and doesn't. So I don't know, that, that's just a technical observation of why you would want to rest it on the sill.
If, if I may, just, it may be, it's not clear enough in the drawing, but I have a little gap here. These are blocks to support it. It, the intent was not to have it rest just for rainwater and such, like, like you're explaining, but I it looks like I need to lift this a little bit more.
Well, it just looks de minimis. But anyway, I said my comment. And the third is, the question has been raised by this association. Why would we have brick when the fences have been wood? I mean, I understand why, but you know, why the client may want it, but would we, would we eliminate original material and replace it with a permanent material? That's a question I have whether about that. Regardless of what there is to the right or to the left in this image, is changing, is changing something that was into something that would be new? I mean, what's wrong with replacing it in wood?
Okay, I think we're going to want to take that up specifically.
Okay, that's, that's my, that's my comments, Commissioner Sherman.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner Finegold. So to that point, I mean, with respect to the window boxes, you see both arrangements on other window boxes in the neighborhood. Some are, are sort of at the same height as the sill, some hang below. I mean, I think either are acceptable, at least from our general purviews point of view. With respect to the fencing, I think Commissioner Finegold raises a good, the important question, which was likewise raised by the Civic Association. And Holland, if, if I can get you back for just a moment, you had kindly supplied some old photos in your written comments, which purport to show, as it says here, historic conditions at 27 Brimmer. I'm afraid I downloaded a a compressed version of the PDF and I'm not sure I can quite see the detail. So if you could, are you representing, to the best of your knowledge, that this fence that now exists at 27 Brimmer is historic, with the term historic to be defined more specifically if possible? Can we unmute Holland again?
There we go. Mark, the historic photo that we show was, shows the sort of knee-high level picket fences that were there when the river used to come all the way up to where Storo is. That was the only wooden fence that was related to this property or this whole street, really.
And what's the date of that photo? Forgive me if it says it in the caption, 1941, okay, right? Okay, so so the, this house obviously dates from a period significantly earlier than that, so we don't know what, if anything, would have existed there originally, but we believe there was a wooden fence 80 years ago or so, in any case, right? I'll be at one of a different configuration and perhaps in design and so forth, so forth. Okay, so no, I think I am likewise concerned about the historicity of this, albeit for clearly a secondary elevation and what is likely not an original feature, but one that is old. Certainly, I think the revision of the design to delete the proposed brick tile or veneer is a step in the right direction, but I think you know, on the whole, I guess I'm also concerned about replacing the one, at least somewhat historic material with something else. Notwithstanding the fact that, of course, you see the, the brick treatment on several of the adjacent buildings, that was a historical detail that obviously was added presumably at some point in the long life of these buildings. But the fact that it exists on some of them, I don't think is instructive on whether or not it ought to exist on this one. We just had this, we've had this come up a number of times, for example, a proposal to install a small garden at the front of a house on Beacon Street. And in that case, we decided that it was not appropriate. Understanding that many of the buildings on the street have such features, it was clear from the evidence that this, that particular house in question never had one. And so I think in terms of historical appropriateness, at least the wood does recommend it. However, I would ask my colleagues to weigh in. Does anyone have a different view on this? Or would anyone like to concur? Nick, if we were to, let me ask you this, actually, let me back up and ask. I appreciate Colin that you likely didn't come prepared with a, with a wood fence alternative. But so one option we would have on the commission is to I think, and Nick, jump in here, but you know, one option would be you could rebuild it in kind. But I appreciate Colin that, that if the direction we need to go in is to make it a wood fence that you might like another bite of the apple, as it were, to come up with at least some revision to the design. Nick, if we went in the direction of saying, having a proviso that it's got to be wood rather than brick, would you be comfortable if we delegated the final design to you so they could move this forward?
Yeah, with, with some direction in terms of what you'd like it to look like, meaning vertical or horizontal slats, et cetera.
Yeah. Okay. Commissioners, anyone have any reservations about that?
Well, no, I mean, wouldn't vertical make the most sense? Isn't that what we see in the neighborhood?
Okay, so yeah, we can certainly provide direction and the height as well, I think is important. Okay. Any other questions, comments, reservations about the other parts of the proposals, proposal?
No, I don't know. Well, I've already spoken. I'm good.
Okay, in that case, I will move that the application be approved with the following proviso, that with respect to the rear garden fence that in lieu of the proposed brick design, that the fence be rebuilt in wood modeled substantially after the existing condition and/or neighboring wooden fences nearby to the property and such that the height of the finished design be no taller than the existing fence and that the door, the gate be of let's just say, similarly utilitarian design, again, harmonious with the fence and other adjacent wooden fences that may have gates with the final design to be approved in advance. With delegation of the final design approval, sorry, the final design to be delegated to staff, approval, to be delegated to staff.
So, Mo.
Okay, wait a second, okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, we'll vote. Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Finegold?
Aye.
Commissioner Kiefer votes aye. Commissioner Steele?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much Colin for coming in. You will get a letter from Nick affirming our determination. If you have any questions about that, what's required, please just follow up with Nick directly and he will welcome your design for the revised fence.
Okay, thank you. Just confirming that those votes were for the light fixture and the planter boxes.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Yeah, and actually, let's just amend or just clarify the motion, Nick, to be the, it's, it's an approval of the revised design as recently submitted. Including the revised design of the planters, the window boxes.
Got it.
Thank you. Right, okay, thank you.
Okay.
And next on the agenda, I believe, is 78 Beacon? Is there a representative from 78 Beacon present?
There's Zach.
That's Zach, I see a raised hand there.
Good afternoon.
Welcome, thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
You want to give us a quick summary of what you are proposing?
Sure, yeah. So our proposed description of work, we are seeking permission to restore the existing masonry at the front entrance of the building. To the existing granite curbs, you'll see I have some existing condition photographs have deteriorated in several locations. So we're looking to repair those using Dutchmans where applicable and possible. If determined that we're unable to use Dutchmans to repair it, we'll plan to replace the curb or the stone material itself in kind. So you can see a chip in the corner of the knee wall in the leftmost photo. And then at the bottom there, where the fence connects to the granite curb, you can see that it's cracked. Similar in the middle photo, and then the photo on the right, you'll see a chip in the knee wall where the iron gate connects to the stone. I wanted to note that the facade itself of the building is excluded from this application. Moving on, we're looking to re-point the front staircase using mortar and existing color and composition, so essentially replacing it in kind. And then lastly, we're looking to replace two exterior light fixtures, one being the chandelier that hangs above the front entrance, and then the second being the wall-mounted sconce above the stairway to the basement entrance. I have cut sheets included, so that's the cut sheet for the chandelier we're looking to replace. It does look more black in the photo, but it's a dark brown finish on the fixture. The light portion of the fixture is eighteen and a half inches tall, the overall height. So from the top of the escutcheon plate to the bottom of the fixture is 27 and three-quarter inches. And then the sconce will be the same color as well. I know it looks black, but it's a very dark bronze, and that fixture is ten and a half inches overall height.
Okay, and can you clarify for us? Okay, so yeah, I was a little confused by the, just looking at the imagery, I did walk by this. The, the pendant fixture is actually, it's not behind glass, right? That's actually, there's a a piece of stone. That's actually, there's a a piece of stone, but it is open to the air, right?
Correct, yeah, there's an archway above it. It looks like there may have been glass at some point in time, but there's no longer any glass there. It's open.
Right, okay, very good, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, so light fixtures and then which are both existing, you're just asking to replace them, same location.
Correct.
And then the repair of the granite. So Commissioners, any clarifying questions before we take public comment on this?
Mark, just a quick comment from, oh, sorry, just a quick comment from me, sorry, Mo. The reason why I put the the front stairs and the granite repairs is that if they do have to replace the granite, this looks like it's original granite. And we know it's difficult to replicate because those quarries aren't around anymore. So if it does have to be replaced, I would just recommend that you will man those details that we can verify that we have the proper granular. Granite.
Yeah, require sample in advance and so forth.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, and ditto for the Dutchmans. Right, we're gonna want samples, yeah, right.
Understood.
Okay, Commissioner Feingold, you had a question?
Yes, yes, I had a question, not about this, isn't, but is it? This may be out of order by sequence, but is not this the building where we discussed the garage door sometime sometime ago?
It is not, it's a different one, I think.
A different one, okay, because I know that I missed a couple of meetings and I didn't know what the status of that particular item was and whether that was here. Anyway, but thank you. No, I have no comment about this.
Okay. Okay, we'll take public comment again. If you want to be heard on the record, please raise your hand in Zoom. Nick will call on you and I mean.
Okay, you're up. Holland, go ahead. Oh, oh, sorry, Holland.
Thank you. We do not oppose this application as submitted as the replacement in kind of Dutchman repairs to the front curb and stoop meet guideline A two. To match visibility qualities and the proposed light fixtures are in traditional locations. And their design is of an appropriate size and style to satisfy guideline E six. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Holland.
Not seeing any others.
Okay, we will close public comment. So then I do have a question, Zach. As what I, as I would understand the application with respect to the granite repairs. You're saying we'll use Dutchmans if possible and then replace the whole piece if not. What's going to determine, because as as Nick pointed out, and I again, I've gone by this, this does indeed appear to be original stonework. And so we would really hate to lose any of that. It is otherwise, and it seems to be quite good condition, notwithstanding these. Few missing chunks. What's going to determine ultimately, how how will you demonstrate? How would you demonstrate that it's somehow beyond repair with a Dutchman? Because just looking at it, I I wouldn't think it would be beyond repair.
Correct, yeah, we are highly optimistic that we'll be able to successfully conduct the repairs using Dutchmans. I just wanted to include that comment on the application on the off chance that we're unable to. We have looked at it with our mason and he doesn't foresee any issues. But again, I just wanted to have that noted on our application if there's any unforeseen complications that we run into when when making the repairs.
Okay, thank you. That was basically my only question, I think, then. But but given that, I I mean, I think my inclination would be. And Nick, tell me if if there's a more expeditions way to do this, but to require that they may be made. Repairs, Dutchman repairs, rather than replacing the entire slab. And then if it turns out, again, however unlikely, that it can't be done, that they come back to us.
Yeah, I think that would be fine.
Okay, Commissioners, any any reservations about that?
No.
Think we're just better safe than sorry here and then, you know, if it turns out there's one that can't be repaired, we'll look at it again and then try to find out what the. I think we would really want the applicant to demonstrate the need to replace them, is what I'm trying to say. That our default ought to be repair or restore whenever possible. And if it's not possible, demonstrate that it's not possible.
Agreed.
That's why I think I'd like to to get another crack at this if we, no pun intended, if. If it turns out that somehow they can't be repaired. Okay, the lanterns. Anyone have reservations about that? I think Nick had a bit of a reservation about one of them anyway. I think I'm probably okay with what they're proposing, but and it's it's an antique brass or a dark brown.
Correct, yes, yeah, it looks a little black in the fixture and the cut sheet rather, but it's a it's an antique bronze finish.
Do you have any idea how old these fixtures are, the ones that are there now?
I do not. Yeah, I don't have any clarity on that.
Okay.
So is it possible these are original?
Well, they wouldn't, it wouldn't be original, original, right, because the.
No.
I mean, the house wouldn't have had electricity, but. I mean, they may well have been there for a long time. Like, Commissioner Feingold, sorry?
I said, I think they look fine.
What's proposed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mark has a photo of the building in nineteen forty-one and and they're not there.
Oh, okay.
And they're not there. Okay, so these are not. Super old.
Super, super old, but.
It might be old, but.
Yeah.
Okay, I think I'm I'm notwithstanding Nick's careful observation here and his new observation, I think. Given his new observation, I think I'm I I don't want to necessarily split hairs on this design. I think in general, our guidelines require that the, you know, size and location of these things be appropriate. That the style be appropriate, recognizing, of course. That these are of by their nature, later, in some cases, much later, architectural features. But at the same time, that they're necessary for basic safety and otherwise. And I think what they've proposed comports generally with all those requirements. So I think I'm okay with them. With respect to the granite, then, I think unless there's some objection, I would. Ask that we require them to be repaired. Okay, so I will move that the application be approved as submitted with the proviso. With two provisos, number one, that the granite be repaired rather than replaced with Dutchmans as indicated in the application. And that samples of all elements of the repairs, the materials. Mortar and and so forth be provided to staff in advance of any any work.
I second it.
Okay, we will vote. Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Feingold.
Hi.
Commissioner Kiefer votes aye. Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, Zach, for coming in. You got a letter from Nick affirming our determination. Any questions? Please just follow up with him directly. Thanks.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, next is one eleven Pinkney, I believe. So representing from one eleven Pinkney, is that Jason? Hi, Jason. Nick will just unmute you there in a minute. Okay, Jason, welcome. Thanks for coming in. Do you want to just give us a quick summary of what you are proposing?
So the proposal is to replace a secondary access gate to the rear of my client's unit. Essentially, the drawing that's up there right now and the following photos show it's essentially a three-quarter inch painted beadboard. Gate that we kind of contend that it does not appear historic in nature, at least in in our assessment. It's deteriorated pretty badly. The photo on the bottom right is actually from my client's back back entry door. She's been using various materials to hold the gate together. It's to this point, it's it's it needs to, it it appears to us that it's beyond repair. Just because of the way that the rod has come through, I've got some detailed photos on the next page. That sort of shows the rod at the base, there's certain rod at the top. There's some mushrooms growing out of it and the gate hardware clearly. Again, I don't, I don't think that this was probably done in a historic manner to begin with.
Do you have any sense of when it, when the current gates were installed?
I do not.
Okay, and so.
So on the next page, so yeah, so the proposed gate is essentially a more substantial gate. With some basically open screening at the top for light and ventilation into that little alleyway. The single panel gate itself, doing like a V groove or V board, V groove board in there. To kind of pay a little bit homage to the existing gate that is there. But again, trying to to do something a little bit more substantial at the location.
Okay, and it's all wood, solid wood?
It's it's wood. I think on the next page, we've got, it should be on the next page. It'll be painted, we're painting it high gloss black, there's a lock set. I don't know if we can bring the next page up or not. There is a lock set on it that will be in polished brass. Is that next page frozen?
Yeah, I got it right here. Here we go.
Yeah, so so the the actual hardware on the left isn't representative of the finish. The bright brass hardware to the right of it is, and then the Benjamin Moore High Gloss HC one ninety black is what we're proposing to paint the whole gate in.
Okay, and. Can you just tell us a little bit more about? Just sort of, I mean, you already mentioned you're trying to make it a little more substantial, but just the basis for the design. Was it, you you weren't, you don't know when the one that was there was was originally installed? But what was your kind of inspiration for what you're proposing?
I don't have any like specific photographs of precedent through the through through Beacon Hill. But being through Beacon Hill, I've seen sort of numerous sort of comparable gate styles, sort of on the back entrances. Perhaps I should have taken some some photos of of those gates, but essentially. You know, various different gates through through Beacon Hill, through sort of, I know, very different area, but through Chestnut Hill. You sort of see these style of gates inserted into brick brick walls pretty regularly.
Right, okay, so. I'm just looking around here. Trying to remember if I if I've seen something specifically of this design, yes, it's on, well, it's it's it's. Not the same, but on Branch Street, there is one on Upper Branch Street that has a similar kind of set of dowels. And it's actually the top frame of the door, not the panel of the door, not the transom. And it's a it's a sort of three-panel door. And it's it's just V groove, it's not beadboard per se, but it's V groove is the the door.
Yeah, yeah, V groove. My client's, you know, obviously open to changing that. I it's my intention that I think the V groove is a little bit more of a substantial feel or aesthetically. And kind of, again, just sort of made that gate a little bit more substantial.
Yeah, where you do see the V groove is that some of the garage doors also on Branch Street, for example, it's not, it's not the same, obviously, it's a garage door in that case. But so there is some, so there are some excellent examples of that kind of treatment. That I just noticed is another garage door further down on Branch Street that has. Again, that sort of analogous, it's got V groove panel on the bottom and then this sort of, it's actually vaguely Chinese. Kind of pattern on the top, a little further down, Nick. Even further, other side. It's been really, we go. Yeah, it's hard to see in the shadow there, there we go. So it's the question of whether, to what extent these treatments were approved by this commission, but. There is, looks like there is some precedent for that. Okay, just, and I didn't mean to get us bogged down here, I just wanted to clarify exactly what we're looking at. Because it's the texture is clearly the important part and that's not always coming through clearly in the drawing. Okay, sorry, please continue. Anything else?
Um, no, I mean, on my end, I think that's that's it again. My client is at the point where where something has to be done with the gate, so we're obviously we're willing to to work with the commission to to. In our opinion, replace the gate in a manner that's satisfactory.
Okay, appreciate that. So Commissioners, any other clarifying questions as to what's proposed, what was, what's there now? Does the height of the thing change at all?
It doesn't, the the existing is eight foot ten all the way to the top there. Yeah, so so right there, the top of that that board is eight foot ten. The one change that I would say is if you zoom into the center photo on the bottom. The existing gate actually sits behind that first riser as you're coming out of the alleyway. The proposed gate actually raises it up. It's sort of my contention that that a lot of the wrath that's happening there is from snow. Sort of piling up between that gate and that first riser, and that that's probably causing a lot of the deterioration. So we're raising that, just that that sill of the door.
Okay. Okay, and and again, just to clarify, there are two of these, right? One on the West Cedar Street side and one on.
Uh, no.
Oh, just one.
Sorry, there's just one. It's just, actually, Nick, if you can go back up on the previous page. So so the bottom arrow there, that's the main entrance into the the building, the condo building. And that where I have that arrow on the top, the rear access gate, that's that's the gate that we're speaking of, that's the only gate.
Oh, okay, thank you for clarifying that. Okay, so so then, just to be clear, it's one gate and it is on Pinkney Street. It's not on. Back alley or the.
It's not on Pinkney, it's it's on West Cedar.
I beg your pardon, West Cedar Street, yes.
Correct.
Okay. And this is the corner of West Cedar and Pinkney, right? Okay, why don't we go ahead and take, oh yeah, this is blurred out in Google Maps, unfortunately. Why don't we go ahead and take public comment? If you want to be heard on the record, please raise your hand in the Zoom. Nick will meet you.
Yeah, we're getting more and more properties that are blurred out on Google Street View, so. Holland, go ahead.
Thank you. We oppose replacing this gate as proposed, as it is not in kind, does not satisfy guideline A two. The application does not provide evidence of an original feature to satisfy guideline A three. A replacement more closely approaching in kind for the door surround and door hardware would be more appropriate and satisfy guidelines E three and E five. Thank you.
Holland, not seeing any other public comment, Mark's.
Okay, thanks, Holland. Commissioners, any thoughts on this? It is a bit more elaborate, that's probably too loaded a term, but it's it's got a bit more going on architecturally than what's there. I would observe, there is a lot of this sort of beadboard stuff in places like Cedar Lane Way, right around behind this building. In these sort of utilitarian service doors, this is a bit of an anomaly because it's right on the street. And if if you're not familiar with it, there is a space between these two buildings, which is very unusual for Beacon Hill. You can sort of see it right at the point of the arrow there, and so it forms a little alley. Just about must must be four feet wide at most, and that's where this gate sits. And so it's right on the street, as distinct from a a service alley or back street or something. So I think architecturally, maybe that might figure into our thought process about this. You know, I suppose one option would be to sort of split the difference. I was asking so much about the detail of the 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 door itself, the the panel of the door is of this V groove detail. I think you mentioned, Jason, you want to just make it a little more substantial. You know, I suppose one way to sort of split the difference would be to retain that existing kind of beadboard. For the center panel. Is that feasible, Jason?
Absolutely.
I mean, I again, I it's not our job to design these things for you. Our job is to opine on historical and architectural appropriateness and consider the the proposal in light of our guidelines, our record of decision. How we've treated these things similarly, but you know, I think the. You know, I think the. The Civic Association has raised a. Uh, a concern about. Deviating from what was there. I don't know that we have evidence either way as to what this would have looked like. Uh, a long time ago. Um, the door is at least old enough to have, to be in pretty tough shape. Um, I would observe, having seen a lot of these kind of things, again, most of them are on backstreets and, and rear alleys and so forth. Uh, that they really run the gamut from. Uh, the quite architecturally considered to the downright, uh, if I, if I may. Uh, ugly and uh, not very architectural. There was even one stretch on. Cedar Lane Way that for years had barbed wire across the top. Uh, of the uh. Of the gate. Um, thankfully, that's been replaced, but um. So I think on the one hand, it kind of wants to be. Uh, utilitarian in nature. On the other hand, it is on the street. Uh, unusually so, and I think as a result. Uh, it could tolerate a bit more architectural heft, as it were. So I, I propose, again, not in the interest of designing these things for the applicant, but. I'm trying to split the proverbial baby here and retain some of the historic aspect of it. Saying let's maybe do beadboard in the panel instead of the V groove.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Commissioner Feingold, please.
I disagree with your. Solomonizing the detail. Solomonizing the detail. I, I like it the way it's presented. I, I think it's a whole, I, I think this V board. Door is not as substantial as the one that's presented. Uh, so I like it the way it is. I, I, uh, and I. Uh, I, I, I'm, I'm not in favor, I. I like it the way it's presented.
And you like the substantial quality of it, you're saying?
Yeah, yes, sir.
And you think that'd be lost? Going back to the beadboard, even just for the panel?
Yes, sir, I do.
Yeah, and, and is it fair to say, not to put words in your mouth here, but is, is part of your, your, your thought on that? Uh, owing to the fact that this is on the street? Um.
Yes.
Uh, Jason, the front entrance, it is, okay. Yeah, so you're kind of persuaded. I, I mean, I think candidly I am too, that this. If, if there was anywhere that you, you would tolerate um, a bit more architectural heft in something like this, it would be. Um. In this instance, where it's on the street, and in fact, I would even go further. And Commissioner Feingold, tell me if you agree, that maybe the better analogy here is not the rear service door, but the front one. We see these, these smaller service entrance doors often on. The, you know, half a grade below. That are on the front entrance and uh. We've pretty consistently achieved, uh, approved. Architectural treatments of those doors that are simple, but do have some architectural detail with them. Would you agree with that?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, I think, I think you've convinced me, Mo, that I'm okay with this. I appreciate your, your input very much. Uh, commit, any other commissioners have a, a view, uh, either, uh. A differing view or want to affirm that? Okay, um. Going once, going twice. Okay, uh. I will move as follows, that in light of the particular condition of the proposed gate being uh. On the, the, the street front entrance. Uh, side of the building rather than in uh, on a secondary facade or otherwise in, on a backstreet or. Rear service alley. And moreover, in light of. Uh, the. Uh, consistent. Treatment of, or, or, and, and as such, and, and owing to that condition. Uh, that this door ought to be treated more like a front service door. Commonly seen in other Beacon Hill buildings rather than a rear one, therefore deserving of additional architectural detail. And further. Given. Uh, the historical approval of. This V groove panel arrangement on other uh, service doors such as the garage doors on. Branch Street, among others. Uh, that the application be approved uh, as submitted.
Second.
That's a long-winded.
Good job.
Okay. Uh, okay, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, did I miss anything, Nick?
Nope.
Okay, great. We will vote Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner Feingold.
Hi.
Uh, Commissioner Kiefer votes aye, Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Okay, uh, the application is approved. Thank you very much, Jason, for coming in. You've got a letter from Nick of uh, outlining our decision. If you have any. Uh. Questions, please follow up with them directly.
All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks. Uh. Okay, next is twenty-eight to thirty Mount Vernon. Is there someone from twenty-eight to thirty Mount Vernon present? Is that Brian perhaps, or Doug? No? Oh, I see Brian.
Application, yeah. Dave Doigno. I've talked to him several times before this hearing, so he should know to be here.
And sorry, now who are we waiting for?
Uh, sorry, uh, uh, Dave Doigno. And I've talked to him several times before this hearing, so he should know that he has to be here because I told him my concerns.
Okay. Uh. See Dave, no, anyone else for? Twenty-eight to thirty Mount Vernon here? And I mean applicants at this point, rather than potentially concerned abouters. Uh, Brian, is that, is that Brian? And I see Brian's got a hand raised.
There he goes. Brian?
Uh, I think you still need to unmute.
Just ask him.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, Brian, are you here representing twenty-eight? Are you representing this application?
Yes, my, my name is actually Jim McClutchie. I'm on somebody else's computer, unfortunately. Uh, and I'm the uh, general contractor on the job.
Okay, Jim, thank you for coming in. Uh, do you want to give us a quick uh, summary of what you are proposing?
Uh, yes, we, we had uh, two chimneys on uh. The twenty-eight side of Mount Vernon between twenty-six and twenty-eight. That we went to uh, repair some leaks and found that the two chimneys were. Actually pulled away from the twenty-six building. Uh, and in danger of collapsing. So we brought in a structural engineer and uh, in the bill, in the um, ISD and uh. They determined that they were dangerous and had to be removed right away. So we, we have removed both chimneys. We're proposing to rebuild them as, as uh, submitted here. At the same width as they were, but a slightly smaller depth. Uh, be, for structural reasons, to be able to hold this up correctly. The original developer had assumed, I guess, that they were attached to the building next door. When in fact, twenty-six was built. Uh, subsequent to twenty-eight and they made no attachment whatsoever. So when they uh, did their structural work. Uh, it didn't hold up. It, it created a very dangerous situation. And we want to create a situation that is safe and uh. Long-lasting and we think. Provides the same look as um. Uh, as the building had in the, in the beginning with the slightly, slightly more shallow protrusion. Uh, but similar, if not the same, i- i- if not exactly the same as neighborhood uh, chimneys are. And we submitted some photographs, I believe, to Nicholas.
I thought there you were gonna change the height as well.
Nope, the height will stay, the height will be identical to what it was and will match the chimney at twenty-six, as it did before.
Yeah. Well, that was my misinterpretation of the application, so I, um, we're changing a dimension, but it's not the height.
That's correct.
And commissioners, for context, because there was an urgent situation here, um, I did authorize the chimney to come down because it was dangerous. So, um, we have to discuss the rebuild at this point.
Well, that makes sense, I mean, it's dangerous, danger.
Yep.
Oh, so basically, it's gonna be twelve inches shallower than it was.
That's correct.
Okay. The same height though.
The exact same height and will, it'll tie into the, to the adjacent chimney.
Yeah, okay. Uh, I see that, thank you.
Thank you.
And Jim, if, 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 uh, forgive me, I'm not a structural engineer, uh, so. Um, or Mason. Uh. How does? Uh. Making it shallower help structurally?
Uh, well, there's, there's a, there's an existing original eight inch brick wall below that. So beyond that, it's just, it's the house. So is everything else is wood in the house. In order to support that. We'd almost have to go to the basement with, with a structure to uh, be able to bring that back up to the fifty.
Oh, so, so to, to put it simply, if you rebuild it in kind. The, the uh, let's call it the westerly twelve inches that you're proposing to remove would be sitting on the roof and nothing else.
That's correct.
I see, okay, wow, um.
That's the way, that's the way it was when we found it.
Yeah. Okay, and this is true of both sides, you're saying?
No, Joe, just the front and back of twenty-six, of twenty-eight.
Uh, sorry, I, both sides. It's, so looking at this very handy image, it's that one? And then it's, it's the one. Behind it on the other plane of the, the other side of the roof, that one?
That's, that's correct. No, 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 the one behind it, yes. Right behind, right.
There, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, um. Yeah, that one I think is quite hard to see at the moment, uh. But, and it's wide, I guess you would see it. From a little bit of Mount Vernon Street anyway. Uh, okay, so, and, and just for, again, for context, what we're looking at now is the twenty-four inch version. In this image.
That's correct.
Okay, now you represented a moment ago that you thought the shallower depth. This twelve inch chimney would be more consistent with other ones that we see, so can you help us out? Just show us, like, what about that one?
That is, uh, that's the exact same size. That's what, as we're proposing. That's almost directly across the street. That's a, a brick and a half that's twelve inches.
Okay, uh, across the street, other side of Mount Vernon. What about the one, to that one right there?
Uh, that one i- is freestanding. It comes out of, out of the house by itself. But the, the combination of that and twenty-six will be very similar. What, once it match, once it melds up with the, with the uh, chimneys on twenty-six, uh, they will be uh, of similar dimension, yes.
Okay, and, and again, just for, uh, let's see. Well, I don't see another one right in the immediate vicinity, but I think I, I get the, the gist of it. Okay, um. You say it's freestanding, in other words, it's not against the party wall of the house next door. Like this one is.
It, it will be against the, the party wall. Oh, no, the, the one on the right, the one on the right there is on, on a party wall. That it shares with the, with the building next door.
Okay, but you're saying it's, it's gonna be about twelve inches on. The thirty Mount Vernon side of the chimney.
Correct.
Like what you're proposing. So this would, okay, to sum up, what you were proposing would ostensibly. Effectively match the one on the other side. That one. Understanding that it's not against this upper story and so forth, it's freestanding, but. In overall width or thickness, it would be about the same?
About the same, yes.
Okay. Nick, is that your understanding as well?
Uh. So you're saying that the, the combo of these, these two chimneys here would basically match this, Jim?
That's correct. They'd be very close. I, I, I would say within, within one brick.
Okay, uh, Nick.
We, we did a, we did a um, a rendering of what it would look like that, that uh, I think you have. Uh, and we compared that, the rendering to an actual. Um, no, there's a, there's a full. Frontal uh, rendering. Um. Hmm.
Did you email that to me, Jim?
Uh, yeah, Dave did, yes.
Let me see if I can find it.
Yeah. There was a, a comparison of the uh. Proposed in, in the previously existing chimney.
Um, let's see. Uh, do you know what date that was sent by chance?
No.
Uh, I see you're on, let me see if I can. Use your last name, MCC. Yeah, I, I only have, I have. This picture from Dave. I have this picture from Dave. Um.
Uh, there was one that he marked up and sent back to you with the, with the dimensions on it, of the rendering.
This?
No, there was another similar to this, but uh, a full front of the building.
Uh, oh, here it is, I found it.
Okay.
Uh, second here.
There you go. So the, the bottom is a, is a um. Photograph of what was existing. Before we took the chimneys down and the upper is, is a um, rendering of what they look like. Uh, after they rebuilt.
Opposed. Fine.
The, the same basic profile with just a little bit shallower um, protrusion.
Yep. Exactly.
Okay.
And, and they'll stay up there, which is a good thing.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure. Yes, Commissioner Feingold.
Uh. Why the hesitation?
Uh, so I think the, I, I'm starting to sort out here. Uh, I had misunderstood the application myself. I thought. The height of the chimney was implicated. We do have a guideline. Uh, concerning historic roof lines that. In, in the simplest terms. Uh. Wants them to be respected. Um. And it does call out specifically. The uh, chimneys. Um, and let me uh. Find it here. Um.
In the staff comment, Mark.
Yeah, uh, C one, roofs and roof structures, original historic roof lines, dormer windows, chimneys, parapets, end walls and firewalls shall be retained. If under special circumstances alterations are permitted, they should be contingent upon. Submission of adequate architectural photograph documentation. Sufficient to permit the alteration to be reversed, preserving the existing roof slope. That's not really applicable here. Uh. Retaining sufficient existing structure so that the original profile. Remains. Um, I suppose you could argue. Um, that uh, we certainly know. What has changed here, uh, pretty exactly, so of course, in principle could be reversed. Um, it doesn't truly change the roof slope. And uh. Retaining sufficient existing structure so that the original profile remains. Arguably, that's certainly the case here. Um, we're not removing the chimney entirely, we're not changing its height and so forth, and so to a significant degree, I think the roof line is. Preserved. In the proposal. Um. Generally consistent with the guideline. You could argue, it's a matter of whether or to what extent this thinning of the chimney. Uh, runs afoul of that.
Uh. I, I submit that it is not. But. My, my opinion, may I speak or you?
Uh, yeah, you know what? And why don't we uh, take public comment and then if you can just hold that for just a moment, forgive me, uh. Just because I realize, and then we'll, we'll have a full discussion. Um. Before we do that, any other clarifying questions now? Again, just to very quickly recap, the height doesn't change, it's just the thickness. It's gonna go, be thinner by twelve inches. And it will look like what you see here in the left. There's, there's the other chimney that is outside of this view, but that is up over the other. Plane of the roof in the back, kind of where Nick is. Indicating there. I don't know if you'll even see it from Mount Vernon Street. Uh, it's not there now, so. Uh, it's hard to know, and there's scaffolding up there, so I couldn't tell. Um, yeah, maybe it's visible from down there. Anyway. Uh, let's go ahead and take public comment. If you want to be heard on the record, please raise your hand in the Zoom. Nick will, will call in.
Okay, uh, Holland, uh, go ahead.
Thank you. We do not oppose rebuilding the chimneys in kind, but are told that is not possible structurally. So do not oppose this application, with the provisor that adequate documentation is provided to satisfy guideline C one. If not, the proposed plan will not satisfy guideline C one, which requires historic roof lines to be maintained and will not satisfy guideline A two. Which requires replacement of existing features to match the original and all visible qualities, including overall size. Thank you.
Thanks, Holland.
Thanks, Holland. Uh, well, we have you, Holland. Can you just clarify? When you're saying you don't, uh, given that it's, you, you, you would understand. Or it's your view that it's not structurally possible, uh, you don't ob- object to it being. Uh. Reconstructed consistent with. A documentation, documentation consistent with guideline C one. Are you referring there to C one A? Um, submission of adequate architectural and photographic documentation sufficient to permit the alteration to be reversed, or are you talking about something else?
Basically that, yes.
Yeah, okay. Uh, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Not seeing anybody else, Mark.
Okay, one last question, Jim. Understanding that this was evidently built with this structural problem, either to begin with or somehow the the thickness of the chimney and the lower floors was taken away at some point or something, such that it a rebuilt chimney would to the current, the previous specifications wouldn't be supported. What about somehow supporting it? Is that it just? Can you just talk about that for a second? Again, not carrying the chimney all the way down to the bottom. I'm not talking about that, but somehow just supporting it from below.
We've the and the unfortunate thing is we only have an eight inch brick wall there. And we have no way to support it structurally and have to depend on that eight inch wall. It's just not enough. It's it's just a double width brick wall that just would not be able to support the pull away, you know, the tensile portion of the of the movement there to protect it from falling away from twenty six again.
Even if you build some kind of like platform underneath?
Well, I mean, it's it's what we have to hold the platform up with is only that eight inch brick wall. You know, and we have we have researched that and it's it it would be it it would be virtually impossible. We'd have to go to the to the basement.
Okay, that that's kind of what I was getting at. Have you looked into it? You looked into it?
Oh, yes, we had TF Moran, the structural engineers, they've they've reviewed it and we haven't come up with a solution to replace it at that at that depth.
Right. So in other words, you might as well just carry the chimney to the basement at that point in terms of how complicated it would be. Okay, okay, I appreciate that. Okay, Nick, you had a a staff comment on this, which I just want to make sure I'm I'm clear about. Which I I couldn't quite tell, is this before or after we we realized that in fact, the height is not implicated, it's the depth?
Yeah, it was after. So I I just, I think these are two sister buildings that have identical dimensions. And I have concerns about rebuilding it in a smaller dimension. Was that the question?
Yeah, yeah, okay. So so that your comment is in light of the further knowledge that we're talking about the depth, not the height. Yeah. So Jim, one more time on on the what explains why this thing is unsupported? And I know you sort of as much as said it, but just can you just refresh our recollection there?
It was it was no, I don't believe it was built out. It was somehow at some point in time modified to eliminate the structural support below it. And I think they, everybody, I believe at the time assumed that the wall was tied into the twenty six wall as the one on the thirty side is tied into the thirty two wall. And built. Now, the the one on the thirty two side, I just want to mention is it's services thirty and thirty two. So that's a double chimney there. And this one is only a double chimney at the top. The twenty six side, their chimney is built within the building and we melded into it at the roof line. So it makes it very similar in size to the one between twenty eight and thirty where it protrudes through their roof.
Right, okay. Um, let's see.
So it's not functioning anymore. I think short short story, the the chimney is non-functional. It's just it's aesthetic at this point.
It's only aesthetic. There's no function to it whatsoever. No vents, no flues, no anything going in up through it.
Okay, so I mean, this is Mo, did you have a, you want to get in there?
Yes, I I do, Mr. Chairman. Considering that it was separating, Nick authorized its demolition. A structural engineer was involved who gave an opinion that it could not be rebuilt as it was. I think th- this is a matter of life safety. And I think the solution is perfectly good. Whereas we give up a little bit of twelve inches of original width. But maybe we should never have had it. So and I would never ask somebody to go all the way to the basement to support. That's that's an irrational cost.
This chimney that doesn't need to do anything.
I think I think I think what's proposed is fine. I think what's it would be nice to have. Is is there any documentation from the structural engineer whi- which corroborates your the contractor's presentation?
Yeah, I I agree. I appreciate that. So I think I just I I want to be careful that we cast this in the within the narrow purview of our enabling legislation and show that we are guided here and cognizant of our guidelines, which are not determinative, but certainly are instructive. And I think maybe where I come down on this, again, no pun intended, is it probably doesn't serve the interests of historic preservation to rebuild a defective structure that is all but certain to fail again and then require an untimely rebuild again. So apart from and distinct from any life safety issues that are implicated, I think there's a historic preservation issue that it's implicated here. I I I am cognizant of our guideline C C one concerning original historic roof lines. And so I think maybe a way forward on this is to stipulate the particular conditions of guideline C one in the first instance and further require the demonstration of the structural inadequacy of the current or previous design on the other. In other words, let them rebuild it twelve inches shallower, but only under the condition that they supply evidence that that's structurally necessary on the one hand and thoroughly document the original condition to satisfy guideline C one A so that it could be reversed if someone somehow in the future were to go to the expense of securing the structure. Again, long-winded, but how's that sound, Mo?
I think you're a master at that, sir. I think that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any other thoughts? Dissent? Spirited rebuttal? Okay, I will move that the application that in light of the structural defect that has evidently been demonstrated in the existing condition. And that in that it would not serve the the interest of historic preservation generally within the meaning of our enabling legislation to restore a patently structurally deficient condition that is certain to fail again and require additional reconstruction, that the application be approved as submitted with the following provisos, that number one, the documentation be supplied demonstrating the structural defect specifically from the structural engineer and further demonstrating that it simply can't be cured by traditional conventional means. And that secondly, that the raise order from the building department be supplied as well. And then finally, that documentation, including the exact dimensions and other specifications of the original condition prior to its removal be submitted to staff such that it would provide adequate architectural and photographic documentation sufficient to permit the revised rebuilding to be reversed consistent with our guideline C one A.
Acceptant.
Okay. Is that is that all clear, Jim?
Yes, very clear.
We're saying you can do it, but you got it before you and 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 those provisos must be satisfied prior to any construction. But you gotta give them the engineer's letter, the raise order from the building department and documentation to show exactly what it was before you took it down.
Okay, absolutely.
Okay.
All that is available.
Great, thank you. We'll vote Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner Feingold.
Hi.
Mr. Kiefer votes aye, Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, Jim. You'll get a letter from Nick. Any questions, please follow up with him and you'll want to send that material directly to Nick. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Good night.
Good night. Okay, I think that's the end of the regular agenda.
Yeah, good provisos, Mark, by the way.
Oh, well, thank you. Sorry, it wasn't might not be as historically perfect as we might prefer, but okay, administrative review, any comments, questions, thoughts, concerns or recusals for any of the administrative review items? Okay, does anyone want to be heard in public comment on the administrative review items? Can't believe I remembered. For once. Okay, going once, going twice. Okay, I will move approval en masse of the administrative review items.
Second.
Aye.
Uh, thank you. We vote Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Richard Feingold.
Hi.
Mr. Kiefer votes aye, Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Okay, administrative review items are approved. And I think that's staff updates, Nick.
All right, a couple of quick things just for everyone's knowledge. Just wanted to announce that we have a new landmark, which is the Old South Meeting House. Yeah, so that's a protected landmark now along with the Old North, I'm sorry, Old North Church and Campus, as well as Old Corner Bookstore. We'll be doing a collective press release related to the two hundred fiftieth anniversary of the country. So those are protected.
Yeah.
Oh, God, if I had a nickel for every time we heard that. Yeah, so but they're landmarked now, so let's be happy about it. You'd be surprised to know that King's Chapel and the Paul Revere House are also not landmarked. Yes, so a petition takes ten signatures from ten registered voters if anyone's interested. And then, last but not least, just encourage everyone to subscribe to one of our eleven newsletters. You obviously receive the Beacon Hill one, but we also have a general landmarks update one and then the other historic commissions. Including the Monument Square Study Committee, which is currently underway that we're working on, so. And then last but not least, I just wanted to let everybody know that we had our subcommittee at one forty eight Cambridge Street. Thank you, Mo, for braving the oppressive heat and humidity and reviewing that and Mark and the rest of the commission. Oh, and Sandy, sorry, Sandy. I forgot about you too. Sandy was there as well. So, Mark, just for your knowledge and Arian's knowledge, we approved it with the contingency that it's not precedent setting and that because this building is new construction, we are approving these windows in concept for consideration of historic properties within the district in the future. So once they're up, the applicant over at Suffolk University will let us know. And we can just kind of take a look and see how we feel about future applications of this product. And Mo had some nice things to say and Rochelle over at the Civic Association, who's a tough critic, she also had some very nice things to say about the product, so. So it's very promising, so.
Yeah, I got to see these up close. Thanks to Nick in the office and right, it's a very promising development.
Whoops.
We can hear you, Mo.
I was gonna add a comment, but
Go ahead, go ahead.
I I I realize that our purview is the exterior. As an architect, I'm sure I've made comments before where I look at the whole. And I did not like the idea that the inside what the inside of the of the window was a fake mountain. It was not that it was a single sheet of glass. It is not divided as is the exterior glass. And I think that somehow there's something I would hate living in a place where I was living in a fake interior when I had a facade that was historic. There was something strange about it, but I realized we don't have purview on that. But nevertheless, I think it's a good prototype. I wish we had used that word in the vote.
We did, we did.
We did?
Yes.
Oh, we did, okay, because a prototype in a in a contemporary building and we can observe it and see what happens. But I was, I just had a bad taste about that being sort of pushed through. But I know that I, whenever I do reach out like that, the lawyers on the committee slap my hand and tell me to behave.
Yeah, so we did use that exact language, Mo. So so we 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 did good there. We don't have to make anything in the future.
I have something to say, but I'd like it after the recording is over.
Sure, yeah, we can do that. If the commissioners want to hang on the line, Mo, are you okay with the rest of the public knowing? Actually, you know what? Why don't we just hold it for another time? Let's we can we can talk next time, yeah.
Okay, is that it, Nick? Are we?
It that's it.
Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Okay, all in favor, say aye. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Let's try to try to stay cool. Happy summer.
You too. Happy summer.
Thanks. See you.